Board members and everyone else for being here today. We appreciate that. Do we have any updates on the weather?
Yes. Eddie, you can get back to your seat. First and foremost, I want to thank all of our first responders, firefighters, policemen, and school staff yesterday who just rose above and beyond. I know that there are a lot of folks who are still displaced, but we appreciate the hard, hard work that everyone showed. Eddie, you want to give an update on the roads and the conditions of schools, please?
Well, first, I'd like to reiterate exactly what you said. We have a tremendous partnership with the Sheriff's Department Emergency Management, and anything we needed yesterday, it was a phone call and it happened. So, thank you to them. We've had, of course, you know, Carolina Beach, Curie Beach. I was just looking at the update. They actually had 20 inches of rain in about four hours. So, the streets are still flooded at this time in locations, primarily like Canal Drive and around Lake Avenue and the lake around Carolina Beach. That was, it's during hot tide, so we expect that flooding to subside, and we'll be checking it this afternoon. We've had our bus drivers out driving routes all day today. The preliminary reports that we're getting back are neighborhoods where we were experiencing flooding and trouble getting into. They're all clear. Carolina Beach, Curie Beach seems to be the only concern at this point in terms of road conditions, other than Highway 17 in Brunswick County. I have a lot of our staff that live in Brunswick County, so that's still a concern. We sent out our post-storm checklist. We're receiving those back now. We have no report of any major damage. I don't believe that we had any floodwaters get into or inside any buildings. We had a lot of wind-driven rain that got into buildings. We've had roof leaks. We've had leaks around windows and doors, some cases numerous. Anderson Elementary School is an example. They had several leaks there. Our primary focus today is getting schools ready to open. So, we will clean things up. We'll get the school ready to open, and then we'll come back later in the week and start making the necessary repairs. But, again, I just can't thank everybody enough for all the work that they did yesterday in getting kids home safely.
Eddie and I also talked yesterday about sort of creating an after-action report, working with the folks from Emergency Management, our communications team, and the county's communication team, to really work through protocols for weather events in the future. But, right now, we're just waiting to get one last check at Carolina Beach, one last check on Highway 17 before we send out the message about tomorrow. But it is our intention at this point, if those things are good, to have school as normal tomorrow.
Excellent, excellent. And I want to reiterate and thank everyone for all their hard work yesterday, and it was a very complicated situation, but it was well-handled, I think, overall, and everybody was safe.
Ended well.
And I guess I'll officially, officially, call this meeting now to order, and I would ask Ms. Bowie to call the roll.
Good afternoon. Pete Wolf, Board.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Jesse Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill. P. McManus. And Stephanie Walker.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here that are here, and we'll continue with our pledge. Ms. Bradford, would you lead us in the pledge?
All right. Good luck to you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Constitution Day, everyone.
And I do have to, I did not, when we did the roll call, declare a quorum, but we do have a quorum present, so we can continue with our meeting. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Carries four zero. Board members, we have several packets in front of you. We have one that I'd like you to start out with, kind of like a little quiz here, a quiz, but a little worksheet. It has our current board norms, and it has the option to keep, discard, tweak, and if you decide to tweak it, please make suggestions there. And why don't we take a few minutes to go through that and, you know, do it yourself, and then we'll bring it back together.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead.
The last one on the list, we voted at our last board meeting to rescind that and take it off, schedule appointments with principals when we want to visit schools, so that one needs to be discarded completely.
Okay. Well, and that's what we'll do, is discard that one. Okay? Take a moment, go through those, and then we'll discuss them. Give me thumbs up, Mike. You're done. Thumbs up. Anybody need more time? If not, I do want to start the discussion before we get into the individual pieces. Dr. Barnes actually, and I were discussing it before, and you think about a lot of these, if you look at and just follow our policies, it covers a lot of the, especially, I'd say, probably the first five or six. Another very important part is, and I think we're getting better at this, is soliciting input from staff. I think it's very, very important, and that's not one in here already, but I think that's a very important one that we might want to add. And then, you know, the superintendent's position is a very important position, obviously. It's our key position throughout the county, and, you know, it says here, respect the position of superintendent and funnel requests for information through them, but also, we also have to remember, you know, the old words of stay in our lane. You know, he's got his lane, we have our lane, and we need to make sure we stay in those two lanes. So, with that said, I'm going to go ahead and start at the top, and we'll kind of go through, and then we can go through some of the other documentation we have. So, thoughts on treat each other respectfully and professionally at all times? Keith? Any, anyone want to tweak here? Anything?
Actually, I would say we don't need the board norms, because if we can't treat each other respectfully or professionally at all times, following our policies, then we don't need to be on the board.
Okay. I would also say, at this point, keep unless we decide to, you know, look at just following our policies, but I think having a sheet in front of us might be a good thing, or a list. You know, and the other piece of this is, as we, you know, move towards a new group coming in, you know, instead of saying, follow our policy, which is very important, we should know our policies, follow our policies, but, you know, to have, you know, to say to a person, you're elected, and two days later, you're supposed to know all these policies, this might be a good overall sheet, just to kind of, I won't say cheat sheet, but a good overall sheet to remind folks of what we're supposed to do. So, overall, we're looking at keeping that one, I think, three out of four. Is that correct? Okay? Return each other's phone calls, texts, and emails timely. What I said there is, I think we need to tweak that, because what is timely? Timely is, you know, I might say timely is 24 hours. You know, I know a lot of principals have, you know, when I was a principal, I asked my staff to return phone calls or emails to folks within 24 hours, but some males could say, well, some point during that week is timely. So, what was everybody's thoughts on that one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would like to change this. I have received from some of my colleagues, really just one in particular, harassment text messages after a vote did not go in the same vein. And so, I think when we're discussing and communicating with one another, we need to be cognizant that we are all professionals, even when we disagree. And so, I have asked that individual to no longer text me after I receive those messages. So, I think on here, there is room to improve of just saying, we can say vague communication rather than specifically phone, email, text, but I've asked that individual to communicate with me via email through my personal vein because of the way that she has responded to me after a few instances. And there's been times, I find very interesting, I do agree with your point, we have new board members coming on, but there has been times through our tenure that there has been, well, the very first one, the safety roundtable at Ashland High School, there was a parent that came up to us to say that a colleague was talking ill of the four of us because we were recently elected, and he shared with us some of the information being, I tried to address individually with that person, I brought you into the conversation after another communication in the community of having the same instance with me personally, volunteering. So, it's difficult whenever the seven of us, whoever is sitting in the seats, in public during a facilitated event by us or volunteering in our community, when members are going to openly degrade one another. We talk about how we want to change the culture and how we want to support and reach out and problem-solve with our staff, both here, central office staff, and our staff at schools, but it does a disservice to the community and the hard work of our staff when we are willing to openly degrade one another in public. So, that's not, this should be a common thing that just people should be able to do from the start, but I understand that this is an election year, and we're going to have three new people, and I think that that should be an understanding expectation. We are going to disagree. The four of us have disagreed on different things, but my philosophy has always been that I'm going to be honest with where I stand on whatever the issue I stand on, because that's how I'm going to treat one another with respect. And if that means I disagree with you, that means it's a disagreement on an issue. So, I have no problem with these board norms as presented, but what I see and what I have experienced as my tenure on the board is, it is acceptable for some people and not others, and it's frustrating. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I will, I will give support to some of the things that Ms. Barnhart just said. I have experienced the texts and emails to the point where I said, I'm going to block you so you can't email me anymore. If you can't be polite, we're done. So, you know, you can't mandate that we speak to each other if one person's acting unprofessionally. It's not something that can be mandated. We, as a board, could deal with that bad behavior, but so far, we've chosen not to do that.
Other thoughts? I would disagree that we have chosen not to do that. We can talk about that later with the other sheet that I have prepared, but I know that there are certain thoughts that this should happen, that should happen. But, anyway, we'll leave that as a tweak. If somebody else wants to add into that discussion. Include all board members equally, solicit input in all key discussions. Thoughts? Ms. Mason?
I guess, is that related to, it's not clear, I guess. Is that related to prior to the meeting? Is that related to in the meeting? That would be my question.
Question? And that's something that we, as a board, you know, these are the exact same board norms we agreed to in 2023, and that's what we're kind of relooking at, to see whether we need to, again, keep them, discard them, tweak them. What would your thoughts be on that? Would you like to tweak it, or?
I would say we would need to tweak it if we're going to keep it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
With that one, would, I would offer the suggestion, specifically in regards to chairman and then chairmans of different committees, to solicit input prior to meeting agendas, something like that. I feel like that would be more targeted direction as far as helping include that, because we may have a 20-minute discussion, and you and I could have a two-minute discussion on the same topic, so it's not going to necessarily, yeah, it's not going to be an equal, I mean, respecting input equally, I can understand that, but I think if we're trying to give direction for new board members of, if you are responsible to be the chairman of a committee, then it's your job to get input prior, not only from board members, but from our staff in the decision-making process.
So, you're saying like the chair of a committee or of the board?
Yes.
Like to start the sentence out?
So, I mean, maybe we can change it just to say that, yeah, I don't want to confuse and say board chairs, but the chairs of?
Committees.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm fine with that. Okay? Somebody else have input on that one?
I would agree.
Okay. Okay. We can definitely do that. So, we're going to tweak that one. In event of an agenda, changes notify the board chair and each member, each other as soon as possible. Keep, tweak? Anybody? Keep? Okay. Be on time for meetings, try to be 10 minutes early. I know that there's times that people are sprinting in the door, but at least they're here. We've had situations with cars that, you know, we've been a little bit late, but at least we're here. Right?
Do we need a statement that says we'll show up on time for meetings?
Well, you wanted to delete it?
It just seems elementary. However, I'd be curious to, you know, attend the meetings that you're assigned to, that would be a good one. Come to all board meetings, you know, it's 12 a year, that kind of thing, because, you know, but, again, if you can't be on time for meetings, then you don't need to be on board. It's just pretty simple. Professionalism.
And I think, I think as far as attending all the meetings, we do have policy related to that. That's where that's going, this might be superfluous for us to be considering this if there is that policy, which there is. So, I would, I would say we don't need to have that one.
Okay. I'll follow that one. Let's delete that one.
And the next one's pretty much the same thing.
Okay. Want to delete that one too, then?
If you have to mandate reading the material before the meeting, then, then something's wrong.
Okay. I'm fine with deleting that one too. All right. Crossed through those two. Okay.
Not that everybody reads the material before the meetings, but still.
Ask questions for clarity of fellow board member superintendent or senior staff for board meetings. Ms. Mason?
And I would say that there are times that even though I've read through it, the questions don't come up until I'm hearing it in person or I'm hearing other people's questions. So, I think that there has to be, if we're going to keep it, there has to be some tweaking of, yes, it would be great if you have the questions beforehand to ask senior staff, but if they come up in the middle of the presentation or the conversation, I think that that is something that we would generally agree is appropriate as well.
I agree, and I think one of the changes that we made is having agenda review for the whole board. It used to be a rotation of just a couple of us would be able to be privy to the agenda, and I think that this is something that has helped us open dialogue between the seven of us, and so, that might be something to say, in general, clarifying questions to be prepared for the agenda review, just to, you know, just, but also, to Ms. Mason's point, I agree. There are questions that come up, you're allowed to ask the questions. This is not limiting that. It is just saying, when should we give our staff a heads-up about those questions? And so, I think the agenda review is an appropriate time to openly have that dialogue.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that one needs to, you know, to be maybe fleshed out a little bit to keep it. I think since the climate survey, you know, we're all dedicated to soliciting staff input, and I think we've been doing a much better job in the last six months in terms of, the agenda briefings are finally starting to hit what we'd intended to do with them, not 100%, but we certainly are making the board meetings go more smoothly in terms of trying to iron out any disagreements or problems before we sit down to do the business of the board. But this one could tweak some, if we want to keep it. And I think we should, I think that one's probably, if you're going to instruct the new people coming on, that's probably the biggest one right there.
It makes me think a little bit. When I, when I first got here, we were doing a revision of all of our policies, and I know that you were still here, or you were there then. We redid the dress code policy. Our old policy had 28 statements in there of what people should or shouldn't do, wear or say. We sort of went back all the way to the beginning and just shortened that policy to say, it's important for our staff to dress and behave like professionals, period. When I look at all seven of the first seven of these, they're really all contained in your 2120 Code of Ethics for Board Members.
I'm not sure that.
And I'm almost wondering if it would be simpler to just have a blanket statement that the board will adhere to policies.
Yes.
The board will adhere to our policy, and you almost sort of take care of all of a lot of the questions.
To that point, but also to the point that we will have new members coming on.
True.
And we can't, I didn't know all the policies when I joined either.
True.
Maybe to have a summarizing statement of, we abide by this policy, here are some of the, some of the primary things that we need you to focus on initially, but familiarize yourself with this policy. I think, I don't think, I think it would be good to have some sort of document for our newer board members that come on, and then when we are no longer here as well, that just continues on, that these are the expectations, but you can find more specificity in this policy.
So, maybe you could sort of have it be the header that says, the board will adhere closely to policy 2120, and then say, some examples are contained below, and you could put these things like?
Yeah.
Respectfully, professionally, communicate, be on time for meetings, and you could just sort of have a subheading for that. But I, I've heard a lot from staff about the board looking at the survey and taking it seriously and saying, what are they going to do to change? And I think something in the policy that states the board will follow its board policy is a powerful statement for the staff and for the community.
And, and you, whoever prepared this package, thank you very much. Policy 2122, role of board members in handling complaints. That one is a big one. We get, they get some of that in their, in their onboarding with the NCSBA, but you guys will do an onboarding with these people too. These two policies need to be front and center. Those are the two first ones they probably need to learn.
Getting very close to that, you know, yeah, driving down the road, seeing signs everywhere nowadays. All right. Okay. I think, you know, like I say, I don't have any problem. We could redo this whole thing and just, you know, we had this for a year, we looked at it, and again, that's why we're reviewing it to prepare for the new board members, but also, you know, as we reflect ourselves on things. With that said, let's, I guess we'll carry on through the rest of this. We can, can we look at maybe, you know, doing it as Dr. Barnes recommends, or we can keep the individual, you know, this could be a subheading underneath, just a reminder of policy 2120. I think this is a very key one, and that is, oh, before that, so I'm sorry. Always clarify when making some public statements, your personal opinion, stance, and that it is your personal opinion/stance and not the board unless you have been given permission to do so. I think that is very crucial, because I think we've had several times that folks think, you know, and I'll be honest, maybe the press also says, board member blah, 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 says, and, but they don't really specify that, you know, that they're speaking as a board member, but not on behalf of the whole board. What thoughts on that one? Ms. Mason?
Keep. I think it's really important that, that we do identify that, and I know I try to, but I know that we're all going to stumble along the way, but to have that in the back of our minds, that this is always something we need to clarify when we're speaking to the media, when we're speaking to the public, that if what we're saying does not align with how a vote went or what the board decided, that we need to make sure that that clarity is provided and noted by the media.
Ms. Dean, are you going to, with the new board members, whoever they may be, going to have an opportunity to sit down with them and kind of go through? Remember, we had years ago, a whole training on, you know, how to speak to the press, etc. That'd be awesome, if you wouldn't mind, because, I mean, it is, it is important, you know, obviously focusing on this policy, but also, you know, a lot of people get up there and stumble through it, you know?
And that would be when you tell them, you send me the message, you tell all the board members what we, yeah, that'd be a great place for that.
Perfect.
All of it. That'd be wonderful.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question to ask, though. I mean, I think, and this is something for us to consider as a board and for the new members coming on, what does it do when there's a board decision?
Hmm.
And your statement, because you're allowed, I'm not going to say you're not allowed to have whatever statement you have personally, but what does it do? Not just to the board, but to the district as a whole? I mean, when you're talking about a heavy load of wanting to change how the view is and the culture is, I mean, to openly say, well, I really hated what Ms. Mason said the other night, and this is why, I'm allowed to say that. I'm allowed to have my own opinion of whatever, but I don't think it creates a consensus-building relationship that we want to see for this district. And if you're looking at what you want to envision for us and for our colleagues and for our administrators and our staff, I think that that's something that does a disservice to the hard work that they're doing when we do that. And I also totally get that you're allowed to do it, but I think it's something whoever is coming on, because it's going to be three new people, who's ever coming on to have that open dialogue to say, we are all passionate about different things. However, we operate as a board, so the decision of the board is what it is. I just, I think if we don't put that out there, that acknowledging that if we're going to totally be allowed, like, to do whatever statement, it's sometimes going to be a detriment to the district, and it's going to make us go step backwards.
Also want to sort of make sure it's clear that I don't have the latitude to do that, that our board policy says that once the board has voted and implemented a decision, I'm required to be supportive of it, which I think is important. And obviously, as we've worked together more, you've gotten, in my opinion, before we make a decision, and there hasn't been one of those issues, but just, I don't have that latitude, just to make sure that that's clear as well.
Well, I think it's also very important that, as Ms. Bradford said a minute ago, we have done a better job in the last six months, four months or two at hearing from folks on important topics, and I think we need to continue that. That's very, very important. You know, and again, at the end of the day, as Ms. Barnhart just mentioned, you know, if we have two different opinions on an important topic, you know, being heard is one thing, but, you know, you can't have, you know, it's like if we turned around every time a person came to call the audience and said, okay, well, they said this, and we're going to do that, and then the male said the exact opposite, you know, we would just, you know, be playing ping pong here instead of making important policy decisions for our staff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like the will of the board is to keep some sort of document, although I'd be more than happy to make a motion to say, all we need to do is follow our policies, but I'm thinking would be, if, if we're going to have something that says, these are the important things that you need to know, putting the students first should be right there, and looking at the effect on the students of whatever you're about to blab out in public, I think that's the most irresponsible thing, blah, 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 whatever, you know, put the students first, and everything will fall into line with that. So, if we're going to have a statement that says, we agree to do these things, let's get that in there.
That's true. I think students and staff.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. Okay. Do I have any volunteers that would like to write such a statement?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Well, there you go. Why don't we allow you to prepare that and bring it back to the board?
Okay.
Let us continue on. As I said, another very, very important one is respect the position of superintendent and board chair and funnel requests for information through them. I think it is equally important to say, but also, in some form or fashion, to say that we need to stay in our lane, we all need to go to the schools, start doing investigations or, as board members, we need to bring our concerns to the superintendent and trust that he will do a great job in the next steps, whatever that may be, and then communicate back to us on what we can, because there are certain times that he may not be able to communicate everything back to us. Thoughts on that one? How we might want to? How we might want to tweak that?
If you're gonna keep it, I would tweak it to say, "Funnel requests for information through them, including contacting the board attorneys." Because I know we've had some candidates that have contacted the board attorneys. I'm like, "You can't do that! At least not on our dime, you can't do it." If you wanna, you know, if you wanna pony up a check and get their advice on things, yes, but, you know. So again, if you're instructing new people in the onboarding, that explanation's always a really good one.
Good, okay, very good. Other thoughts on that one? No problem to add, board attorney, that? Use board portal.
I think that needs to be tweaked or struck. So, and the reason why I'll say this is, I know Dr. Barnes, whenever information gets out, he sends us a text and just saying, "Just so you know." So we're aware prior to it going out to the public statement. I think this, the biggest thing, and I've said this, I think, to a couple of central office staff, we are the communicators to the public, to you guys, vice versa. And so I think it's really important that we are communicating and we know, whether or not it was our decision or not, like, I'm just saying, this is the decision, this is why it was made, this is what we're doing, this is how we're changing, whatever. Because any time we update policies, any time we're doing whatever, it goes over better when we're sharing as much information as we can about the justification for the change, about why we can't, why this general statute we have to follow, and so we don't like the calendar, but this is what we gotta do, or whatever it is. Like, those are, those have gone over as well as they can because we're helping share and disseminate information with the public as best as possible. Right? The same thing with different groups that have come up for different changes and advocacy things. And so I think the board portal was intended to ensure everybody had access to the same information. I think that can be communicated via the board memo. I think it can be a text message of information. I like how we also have the attorney solution, so they're also aware of what's going on. And I like the progression that I've seen happen. We know, and then I see the all-staff we know, and they know. And then I see the parent, and they know. And then I see the social media blast, and now, now it's everywhere. And I see the statements to the media. So I like how that dissemination of information was happening, because I don't believe that was happening consistently in years past. And I think that the board portal was a potential solution to help with that facilitation of information. I think we have a good process in place now. So I used to use the board portal all the time, and then I would look in, and it would be only request from Josie Barnhart. But again, the intent behind why the portal was created is so that we all had access to the same information. Because when there's a concern in the community, oftentimes, we're gonna get the same question asked of us multiple times. The goal of the portal was to get the information consistently to answer the questions. So I'm fine with discarding this, but understanding, you know, if we want to put something in there, understanding the threshold of information dissemination. There are times that we say, "We have to wait till after blah, blah, blah's announced" before we say, "Robin Hamilton is our chief academic officer," you know, such and such like that. I mean, we get access to things prior to the community. And so as long as we know when we're allowed to openly share and the protocols of, after this point, we're allowed to do that, I think it's fine. Sorry, I don't know what it is.
And I would just remind, you know, board members, I think, I agree with you 100%, but the present way is very, very good. We just have to be very mindful not to, in the part of the conversation, if that becomes a problem. So I have no problem in just guarding that, everybody else feel the same.
I would agree with Ms. Barnhart. I don't like to be a rule breaker, and I don't use the board portal. It's just one more thing to check. And, you know, there's only so many minutes in every single day.
You can also wrap that in to policy 2120.
Yep.
There's actually a rider that says specifically about seeking systematic and effective communication with school staff and central office. I think that really, that really works that in, into a way of, because it's really not just about who communicates what, it's about how we communicate collectively, efficiently, and clearly to all of our stakeholders. And I think you guys being a part of that process is helping make that happen.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll chime in here too. I think the media is really loving the statements, because they're getting the same information. And I think when I have spoken to reporters, they just want to share information. So having a written-up statement has been very good for me to help articulate, "Here's where we're at." And so, again, we're trying to say, we'd like to see the same messaging and consistency, so that everybody's on the same page, because that's our job. We are like the interactions between the public and the staff and our community. So I think that that has been very helpful. I think that there's been a positive response in having consistent communication, which is, you know, everybody just wants to know. When you're talking about your kids and, you know, making sure they're home safe, like, that's, they wanna know that. And so I think, I think those have all been really good things. And again, fall under the systematic approach.
And I will say, that's a kudo specifically to Christina and to the communications team in Louisiana. The work they've done in the last several months to just make sure that is happening has been a big deal.
Yeah, and looking for win-wins on yesterday, that was, that was very apparent. We were informed, we could handle the complaints that we were catching, and we informed the media. We did a really good job in transparency yesterday. We really did. Thank you.
And I will agree with that 100%. And the last one that we've already decided, or we've already voted to discard, I just would remind board members that, you know, that it is important, you know, that we do, you know, stop in the office to begin with so that the principal or assistant principal, if assistant principal runs the school that day, knows we're there. And I'm just gonna speak for myself, I always go in with the idea of, you know, like I said, I've shared the conversation before, I had one principal that, hey, if I'm here, well, usually most principals like, I use this, if I'm here and it's a bad day for you, you've got something going on, please let me know, and I will go somewhere else. And I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna call the superintendent and say, "Oh, my goodness, somebody was mad at me and wouldn't let me in the door." You know, I'll come back another day. And that's the thing, we need to have that flexibility to be able to do that.
And I have told principals that kids first. So if you guys come to a school and there is something going on, you know, just know that, you know, some of you are checking if you want to do something specific, you're calling first, but just know that I have told the principals that kids first.
There's no problem with that. I don't think any board member would have a problem with that, that's 100%. It is children, you know, children first, and definitely important. Anything else we need to add to this list?
What about, when Ms. Barnhart was talking earlier, I wrote down, you know, I think, especially with new people, but if we're gonna acknowledge what we do, what we don't do, the fact that we adhere to Robert's Rules of Order, which say, "I can't say in a meeting, you know, Ms. Mason's just a debatable person, blah, blah, blah." I'm not allowed to do that by Robert's Rules of Order.
Can you pick somebody different?
You're closest to me.
It says, "Kicking on the back of your shirt."
But we're not allowed to do that. And boards in the past have really violated that rule. So if we're looking to go forward with professional conduct to remind, you know, of the obvious, you know, things, I mean, and we can, we can call points of order, but then it looks like we're in dissension where it's just, it's understood that, and accepted that we won't act unprofessionally towards each other on the dais, or our vendors, or anyone else. Again, it seems like a given, but since we've had such a problem with this in the past, maybe we want to put something, if we're creeping it, put something in that says, you know, "This board, we acknowledge that we're following Robert's Rules of Order."
Okay. Unless, I think we need to have something, unless it supplants in one of our policies.
Yeah, yeah.
Policy.
And with that, maybe we should, you should read out policy 2120, because this is our Code of Ethics for school board members. And again, we need to give it to new people, but maybe people don't even know what it says, you know. Or maybe we've forgotten it, or whatever. I'm familiar with it because we've dealt with it so many times. But, you know, it covers a lot right there.
It does, there's a lot there.
And then if you look at the complaints, which rolls right into that. And duties of officers, that's really good one, too. These are great policies. Okay.
Anything else as far as the board norms 2024 we want to discuss? If not, Dr. Barnes has given us a wonderful example, and I think this is wonderful, yeah. A wonderful example, it's wonderful. A great example that's wonderful, that talks about school board responsibilities and superintendent responsibilities. You know, where the school board responsibilities are, and, you know, what we should be in, the lanes, what lanes we should be in, and the lanes that, you know, the superintendent should be in. I think those are very important. It talks about policy, strategic planning, who's under the Board of Education, supervision. And if you notice there, supervision isn't, you know, classroom teachers necessarily, or even principals. It is supervision of the superintendent. Advocacy and representation, curriculum and budget approval, very, very important, and oversight. And then the superintendent's areas of responsibility are implementing policy, daily operations, staff management, community relations, instructional leadership, and budget management. Except for, I think this is something we definitely want to share with the new folks too. Any discussion on this?
I would, I would, I'm just looking at it again, and it's the first time I've seen it, but I had always had the five jobs of the school board. Hire and fire the superintendent, it's on there. To set curriculum and vision for the future. I think that one's pretty much got, the curriculum's over here and somewhat over here, so I'd like to come back and talk to that. Set policies for teachers, students, and administration. Manage the budget. I really think that most people don't realize our job is to manage the budget, which is why we need to be really informed and directly involved in the budget. And we're gonna, we're gonna work that out for this time. And maintain the infrastructure, so capital improvements is a really big deal. But as a board with staff, you know, is it the board's job to set curriculum and the vision for the future? I pose that question, because I've always believed that. That was in my school board manual when I was learning how to be a school board member. So is that true, or is it not true? It says, "Approve the annual budget and major changes in curriculum and educational programs," which is a little bit of a tweak right there.
Other board members? Any thoughts on that?
I'm not gonna answer her question, but I want to. I don't, I don't want to answer the question right now, but have a thought on this.
Well, I think part, you know, part of our curriculum comes from the state Board of Education, so that's, that's part of it. And I know other counties have said that they're not going to teach parts of that curriculum. And that's, I think, part of the discussion for the school board. And then, but I also think that it's not our job to go out and say, "Okay, we have a new math curriculum coming in." You know, we don't go out and solicit different groups to come in and present that. That's done at Dr. Barnes and below his, and what do you think on that?
I think this is not just for the board, this is really also for myself, for my senior staff, or our senior staff, to sort of work through. The challenge for me, and I think one thing we've all talked about, the seven of us, is where that school operations, board governance line is. I think we can certainly have some discussion about this, but this is a good starting place for us to sort of help us understand where my role stops, where your role starts, and vice versa. I think especially because I am coming into this with little experience, it's been good for me to be able to have some, I don't wanna say norms, but something that helps me understand where things sit.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why sort of we worked on creating this with some input from other folks.
Mr. Chairman, we, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's kind of like we, I used to speak about, you know, the buck stops at the principal's office. Well, in this case, if the buck actually does stop with the Board of Education on curriculum decisions, that's why we have, you know, it says here, "Major," you know, changes. You know, and I think that is something that we have to approve. So we hear presentations, it's not just a, maybe a rubber stamping, it needs to be, you know, looked at and, you know, really evaluated for making instructional decisions.
Well, and along that vein, Mr. Chairman, when we see general statutes and saying, "Hey, our policy is not reflective of that, but it's in the general statute," that cognitive awareness, because we, the seven of us, we'd be the ones called in to defend and stand up to, for the law of this is what is. It's not, it's not any of the health of our other staff members. And so that's where it is a kind of partnership of, we have to ensure that we're following the law. And if we're not doing that, then we need to reflect our policies so we give better guidance to the staff, so that we are not gonna inherently, either intentionally or not, to break the law. I mean, these are things that whenever, yeah, so along that vein. I, we've updated some of our policies, because I, I mean, I was the policy chairwoman two, two times ago, but there was things, I said, "We are not really reflecting this in our policy of what the expectation is." And how can we expect our staff to know the expectation if we're not conveying that? And so those were things, conversations that I had. I mean, but yeah, that's, it comes down to, we want to get the input from our staff. I don't think that there was anybody saying, "Oh, you're always gonna pick it." I mean, that's why we approved the last curriculum we did, because it was voted most by the staff of this is the one that they wanted. But I, I do have to, I like this graphic. And the one that's sticking out to me right now is oversight, and it's just with the events of yesterday. And I know, I was trying to be in open communication with our community, because a lot of people were very anxious and nervous, and quite frankly, mad. And I know that, Dr. Barnes, you were the decision maker, that you care about kids. And the reality is, sometimes, we're not gonna agree on decision makings, but I can stand firm in the belief that I know this man cares about kids, I know that I care about kids. And so when the storm continued to get worse, I knew the vein that I could live in is, how can I help get these kids home safely? So I'm not gonna sit here and argue about, "We should've done this, or we should've done this." And yes, we should update some of our protocols. But I think that understanding that sometimes decisions are made that we're not going to wholeheartedly agree with, but we always have to look at that next step, because the ultimate end goal was ensuring that we had safety for our students and for our staff in a relatively stressful time in communicating that with parents. And so I, I think it's very timely that oversight is on there and the effects of yesterday, because I do not, moving forward, I do not want to, as a board, individually or collectively, I want to ensure that when there are disagreements, that we say, "Okay, we're moving past that, because the next thing is to ensure that we want a positive outcome for our staff and students." And I just, I just think yesterday was a great example of that. Like, I think there was a lot of people who were frustrated with the decision. Some people said, "Good call, if you lived on the north side of town, you're like, "It's just right." But if you live down in Curry Beach or Carolina Beach, it was devastating for some of our communities." And it was really scary. And I think, I got on the phone with him, I said, "Has emergency response been active?" He said, "Not yet." And I said, "Commissioner Spolley," and I talked to Commissioner Pierce as well, and I was like, "When do we activate? And when are we going to?" I said, "People's cars are flooding." And so understanding that his decision, whatever it is, we can assist with, with our relationships and network with people. And I think that that is something that I have strived to do my tenure on the board, but for new members coming on, that is the vein I'd like for us to all live in. Because now you know the contact for the mayor of Carolina Beach, and you have his number, and like, these are things that we can help with. And if we are going into this and understanding that, how can we make it better with the solution in mind, I think it's going to go overall, this collective, you know, roles are gonna work better. And so I see that in oversight, not necessarily accountability oversight, but also the process and assisting with the process. Because we can only do whatever we have access to, and if we know we have the capability to make some phone calls and have greater access to things, then we need to help step in and do that. And so I just, anyway, I'm not throwing him under the bus, but I know that every decision that is being made is going to be done in the best interest at the time of the information given. And I think if we can live with that and understand that we, as board members, are gonna do that too. We're gonna take in all the information and make the best decision that we can possible. Not that everything's always gonna agree all the time, but I think that that's something that, that common respect and understanding is going to help us be able to move past, go to the next meeting and not be sourp faces about things.
I think something like this also undergirds all the rest of your policies as well. I think something like this also undergirds all the rest of your policies as well, because it puts you guys in that space of an appeal process. Most of our policies are built so that policies or questions or concerns can be appealed to the board. It becomes harder when you guys are involved in the decision-making as it's going along, because it's harder for you to then to objectively, to not rule on something, but to, to work through that appeal process. So this was a way to sort of help us all remember where that support goes. And I think I talked to, I think every single one of you yesterday as well. You know, but in, in regards to having employees feel like, okay, the superintendent is where the buck stops with a lot of these issues, then there is an appeal process if that's not a decision that they're comfortable with what I made. So, you know, I, I, I'm not saying this is the be-all, end-all. I think it's a good starting place for us to sort of, because we are all learning new dance steps, all eight of us, so.
You're stepping like feet. I'm sure I do.
But going back to budget management, um, you know, as I understand it, the seven of us were elected to manage the budget, and since I've been on the board, we have not done that. I haven't felt like I had the information. And so, you know, the, the motion that we made and passed last month to have some consulting with finances, that will tell us from people who are experts at school board that do this, this is what you should be telling the board before April, whatever the date is, you know, this is what they should have at this point, this is what they should have at this point, so that they can then make an informed decision. And if we do that, life will be so much better. Um, just imagine if we had done that last year, and, and we would not have gone through the trauma that we went through this year. Because if I'm going to vote for a budget, I have to have all the pieces that I need to know to be able to vote for it. And if you remember, I made the vote that we could amend it, but that we had to pass it because of the pressure that was put on at that particular 11th hour moment. And, and I, and, and it's not, and if I'm wrong, if I've been misinformed that it is not our job when we vote on that budget, that we're managing that budget. I mean, it's not, I'm not saying that we tell you, you know, but, but it is ultimately the oversight of that budget belongs to us. So we have to work more closely together than we've done in the past two years on that process. And mostly it involves us being more informed of what is and what's needed. It's, it's more of an information and transparency thing, and I think we're going to be fine, but I, I don't like seeing this the way it is. And same with the curriculum, those two things, curriculum and budget. I, I think we've given too much to the, whatever beautiful fall color that is versus the blue. But if I'm wrong, tell me. But, you know, because this is what I've always believed my job was, and so I've operated under that assumption.
I would say that the finance committee, you know, that's one of their big things, is to, to, to work on, you know, because originally the finance committee was the whole board, and then it became a sub, you know, subcommittee that, you know, was supposed to work closely with the finance, with the chief financial officer and be able to, you know, be that liaison between the finance committee, you know, specifically for the budget, and the whole board.
Well, we failed completely then, because, you know, we, I think I managed to schedule one meeting that ended up getting canceled, and I think that was for the whole year last year. So, again.
Maybe something that we need to have in our school board, to try to sort of help us delineate where that line is. But I think that, um, you know, we can certainly develop this as a working document and then bring it back.
Well, that consulting will, will, will really make a big difference. Because they'll know for sure, because they've worked in so many school districts and are experts and so on.
Thank you, sir. I think that looking at the oversight bubble, maybe there can just be some more description, because, I, I mean, the superintendent is going to say, here's how much money we got, and here's how we can operate within those. And so that last line, it says, are used efficiently. I think that's where the oversight comes in for us in the valuerated lens process to say, um, here are some things that I don't love, you know, here are some things that we do. I mean, I was very vocal, and I think many of my board members agreed, um, the focus needed to be a decrease in the central office admin role and as many as we could in the increase the school positions. I mean, and this is not something that's a knock at the work that they do, but when you're looking at priorities, I was very open about that priorities, and I, I am grateful to know that we had some savings and we're going to be able to push that back out into schools and that our superintendent is on board with that. And so I, I think, I think if we wanted to add some more clarity and oversight, I think it would address your concerns potentially with the curriculum approval as well as the budgetary lens, because yes, the, you know, when you're looking at things, we're going to be the ones held accountable. If we're, if there's a mismanagement of, of whatever, like, I mean, you know, and so this is, yeah, I think that bubble could be bigger with more information. Um, I just, like, after the events of yesterday, I think sometimes, too, accountability is one of those things of oversight naturally you go to, but it's also, I intentionally networked, I think me and Ms. Mason were talking about it, with people and put myself in situations, um, to continue to collaborate with our community, because that's going to benefit us. Whenever somebody reaches out, I got a text today and said, hey, where can I bring these to? I got some school supplies donations, and I'm going to send out an email after this and reach out to some, um, principals. But the, these are the things that we can do to support. And I think it, I don't know, I think that we can increase the oversight bubble and address some of the concerns you brought up, and, but help the direction of the new incoming board members to give that clarity to.
I think that's important, because I think we do want to, you know, especially the new board members, with the whole board, obviously, but especially the new board members, give them clarity and direction, and, you know, it is important, because I know a lot of board members that start out, they want to go to schools and work with principals, you know, elbow to elbow, and, you know, going to school is, is wonderful. But, you know, like, you need to let the teachers do their job, and the principals do their job, and the principals do their job, and understand where all lanes are. So I think this is a very good document to begin with, and maybe we do need to, back to the tweak, tweak a little bit and stuff.
Yeah. And to address Ms. Barnhart's concerns about yesterday, Dr. Barnes, we're not saying we want you to call us on every decision, we're not. Unfortunately, the public believes that this board is responsible for schools being open or not, and they were pretty angry parents yesterday, lots of them. And so we just said, you know, we, it wasn't our decision, we're sorry. So that, that's not a good message we want to put out there, because they're like, well, it should be your decision. But it's, but it's not, that they believe it is. So, um, I'm not, I'm not asking you to call us on every decision. You know, I just, just want to be clear on that.
Short of letting the two-town truck from Caroline Beach drive over me, I think I've made that as clear as a human can.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, it is difficult when you're making decisions with information at the time.
Yeah.
We are aware of that.
That was a freak storm, and I think everybody at this point realizes it, but yesterday morning, they were just thinking, it was just a bad call. But, I mean, the storm was a, a once-in-a-thousand-year kind of event.
Correct.
But again, that does definitely, it's not just a good support, because whether or not you agree with the decision, doesn't matter. We're a board, and we're operating together, and we're operating together. And there was a point yesterday, and I was like, hold on, hold on. Like, that's the mindset we get through the day, and with the end goal, we're doing this. And that's what we did.
And we did.
Yeah, we did.
And grateful to that leadership, and your leadership, and everybody involved in the process. And so.
Ms. Mason would like to speak.
I know, I don't talk much. Yeah, and to, to kind of follow up with that, Dr. Barnes was very clear all day, whether we agreed with the decision or not, and that was neither here nor there at that point, because a decision had been made. And so moving forward, we supported whatever he was doing, but he was communicating the entire day. I mentioned to my own family, I was on the phone all day with somebody from the district. And so to his credit, he, his communication was amazing, and the communications team was amazing. So I think that, you know, if there's any wins, that's a huge one, because we haven't always experienced that. And so just a great big thank you to you for, for doing that.
And a little thank you goes to everybody else.
That's great.
Yeah. The whole group. Awesome. Well, I think it is important, you know, and if you look back, I, I still get some emails and stuff from Attender County and Brother County and stuff, and they, you know, they also had difficult decisions to make. That's what you get a big share for.
I made the joke yesterday, we're going to operate every day with a two-hour life. Now, just make sure.
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah. Yeah.
All right. Are there other discussions we want to have around what we have on our agenda? Is it not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we, that we somehow commit to following our policies so staff knows what to do, and that we solicit staff input. So I move that we, we create some sort of something, maybe something we all sign, or I don't care, but.
Ms. Mason has something very important to say. I think it's important, Ms. Mason.
To back that up, as we were talking through the board norms, I did double, double work here in multitask, I did type up a document.
Great.
That we could sign, that I can send to all of the board members, but includes, then we can, it's a Google Doc, so we can edit it as we want to, um, working document that we can use, but that can be signed. And just that first, the first paragraph is, as members of the New Hanover County Schools' Board of Education, we acknowledge that all decisions made for the district are to ensure the safety and the high-quality education of the students that reside within its boundaries. To this end, we therefore agree to adhere to the, to establish policies in regards to how we conduct the business of the New Hanover County School District, specifically found in Policies 2120 and 2122. And then I have general expectations include, but are not limited to, and then the, the board norms that we have. And if there's any tweaks that we want to make, if there's any tweaks that our senior staff wants to make, um, I can send that out to everybody. So I would second her motion and say that.
Yeah. What she said.
All right. That sounds very welcome. Good job. Found it here. There we go. There we go. All right. Well, um, we'll be asking on that, and I would say that, why don't we further discuss that, we have our agenda review next week? And you'll have to add that into our discussion at the beginning of the meeting. But, and please share that with the other remaining board members, too. All right. Having no other discussion in front of us, I would make a motion, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All favorits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. S is four zero. Thank you for your time today, everyone. We are adjourned.
Thank you, guys, on the phone.